I'll call the 3:00 PM session of the September 23rd, 2025, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors together. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors, remind you that if you want to address the Board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the Board. However, the public may address the Board under the Agenda item. Matters presented by the public that will take up later in this meeting is Agenda item number 13. Again, welcome everyone. We have Taylor Boyd here from the Enterprise. We have Keith Scott, Richard Weaver, and Ben Boone from Representative School Board. And I think I saw the registrar in the back there. You all are welcome along with Sheriff Davis and members of the Sheriff's Department. Thank you all for being here as well. We will now conduct business starting with Agenda item number five, Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the items of consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number six will have a monthly report on delinquent tax collection efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grandstaff. Scott, welcome.
Good afternoon. This is a report as of August 31st, 2025. Personal property collection, we collected 89.87% of the 24 personal property taxes. We collected $127,827 during the month. Real estate, we collected 94.63% of the 24 real estate tax. During the month, we collected $13,067. That's kind of a little off because we had some demolition fees that went on, so we collected more money, but y'all put more money on my delinquencies, so thank y'all very much. January 1, taxes collected $827,171. Debt set off, we collected $5,320 on September 16th. For the year, we collected $378,076.55 in debt set off. DMV stops as of today, we have collected 115 through the month of September. And as y'all know, the real estate bills are out and they're turning very well. And take the due date as you want.
All right. Does anyone have any items to ask Mr. Grandstaff at this time?
Ms. Harrison Commissioner, she's not here, but she's gotten very far on the personal property book and they should be mailed sometime in October, personal property book.
All right. Thank you. Agenda item number seven will have an update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board, we'll take a little bit of tact today and not read much of the reports. You can go through that yourself with his politicians and help things. On the second page under our marketing, you can see there's a lot of prospect activity. And as I was telling you, the number of prospect activity and volume, this is the most we've had in 20 years. That does not mean we're going to get all these prizes, but it does mean that we've got a lot of activity. And if you don't have activity, you don't end up the projects. So we're excited about that. We do think that is due in large part to the work that's been done over the last 20 years in developing sites and buildings, and that's what people are coming to look at. You'll see the attached unemployment report for the month is still picking up a bit. Mail has closed, DF has closed, and those jobs we've lost are impacting us overall, but the job market still remains strong. We also, just out today, are the 24 tourism economic development numbers. You have a set of flyers, you see, the 78% was spent direct through spending in Martin County. That means almost $200 per year saved by every household in Martin County. And on average, 214,000 plus per day is spent in tourism in that industry, which is a 7.4% increase from 2,023. So we've come through the COVID period. We have a very robust on-site, social media presence with our tourism activities now, and we think we're seeing that pay some dividends. So with that, if anybody has a question, I'll answer those afterwards. If we thought it might be good, in light of the good news we've had in the last couple of weeks, we kind of walked through the Nathan Trotter announcements, show you some of the stuff that's been done, we have some videos that are being used in our marketing. They're online. It's generated a lot of interest in Henry County, so it's been a great asset for us for marketing. It just hit me that, looking at the Board, September 23rd, 2024 was the first day we talked to Nathan Trotter, so today is one-year anniversary of that. So thank you again for all the work that you've done for us in helping us make days like the 9th of September possible. So I thank everyone, most people there with Nathan Trotter. Hopefully you can see this on your video. A nice ground breaking, the weather cooperated. It's actually the first time we've had an actual project development outside. Lots of help from the county and the EDC. Also, these are the five brothers, the two families that represent this nearly 250-year-old company. They've been very positive in their comments that they've made. It's good afternoon for our leadership to be with the Governor. Obviously, always good to have him here from the event itself, flag presentation. It's actually some of the tin that will be produced at the site. And that looks kind of light, that's probably about 25 pounds worth of tin.
Sixteen. I weigh it.
How much?
Sixteen.
I stand corrected. Of course, Mr. Wagner, wait, sixteen. I'm not good at math. Some more local folks and politicians, our local folks again, want to make sure that all the people involved in making that day kind of fruition with us. We did some videos after the fact to Jim and company reps and others that are being used in our marketing.
Today's announcement, we're getting a lot more than just the economic development. You see, we are able to announce a project from a company that is literally doing business in America, nearly battling the American 236 years. We have a partner that understands what commitment means. Today is fabulous announcement, an announcement where this great business, Nathan Trotter, has invested $65 million and hired 118 people. We want you to be successful. We had a unique collaboration here between the force and county partners, and I want to thank the live environment. All of a sudden breaks down barriers and recognize that we win and we work together. This project is extremely relevant, this business can work together to improve lives in America, whose national security is critical. And here they selected Virginia. This is fabulous, fabulous location in Henry County to do something that has not been done in the United States, which is develop a tin production and processing facility at scale that we not only are excited about from the economic opportunity, but we are excited about the national security opportunity as well.
Thank you for your confidence in Virginia and for the energy and the selection of big facilities under the first facility, outside of the city. We provide that opportunity.
Strong communities are built on opportunity. Added to our economic developments, if I've got meeting initiatives for everyone to know our relationship to throughout.
We want a little bit of some of those to carry our audience, and they're not bothering us. And some of them, all of this kind of activity.
I just want to say thank you for trusting, staying for understanding that J.J. will work hard to support you, because we not only want you to succeed, we need you to succeed.
I think having a company with the historical legacy of Nathan Trotter coming here shows that we have a community that has something to offer. We have so much opportunity for growth here in Martinsville Henry County.
We're a 1789 registered business founded in Philadelphia. From the day we set foot here, it felt like it was a great fit for our company culture, the types of ways we need. The labor base here is fantastic. The local utilities have been incredibly supportive. The transportation hub coming out of our work is huge for us because we import our product. So all of those elements, it made this a great fit for us, and it just felt like home. It speaks well to the essential workforce and training that we have, and it'll be a great compliment to the folks that are here that manufacture and make rocks. That's really our strongest, the people who want to make it come here.
It really falls down to our residents and our citizens here that have a demonstrated armed perspective that makes companies want to come here and they can fulfill those jobs and meet the mission of the companies.
This announcement, Nathan Trotter, is just another example of the great kind of companies that we're aiming to attract. I think the quality of this company, the legacy of this company is proof positive that we are a community of value and we're a community where business can happen and manufacturing can happen.
Everybody's always watching, so when other companies read about this announcement and see that a company that's nearly 250 years old has the confidence to leave their home state for the first time and come to Henry County, it speaks volumes about the kind of partnership that we can provide for other companies.
Okay, just a couple of those.
Major manufacturing investment is coming to Henry County, bringing jobs, innovation, and a first-of-its-kind facility to southwest Virginia. As WDBJ 7's Taylor Locke reports how it could help bring critical production back to American soil.
New jobs, new industry, and a new chapter for Henry County. A metals manufacturer is set to invest millions right here behind me that could change the way tin is processed in the U.S.
This great business, Nathan Trotter, will invest $65 million and hire 118 people.
This land in Patriot Center Industrial Park will soon turn into this, a first-of-its-kind tin production and processing facility.
When we say "made in America," I want it to say "made in Virginia."
Governor Glenn Youngkin has championed that vision. Right now, the U.S. relies heavily on foreign sources for tin, a critical part in everything from semiconductors to defense and energy products.
We have seen the production and processing of a lot of these critical minerals just extend around the world, but none of it's here.
The governor says that changes today. The company behind the project is Nathan Trotter, a family-run business based in Pennsylvania. Partner Tyler Morris says this will be the first expansion beyond state lines.
To your question about why Henry County, I mean, skilled workforce, a lot of the infrastructure that you literally can see in the background here, right? That substation onsite, we need electrical power, we need other things to make sure that, you know, our investment is going to get to a point where we stand it up quickly and can start doing what we want to do, which is providing jobs.
118 jobs, to be exact, something the governor says is a big deal for rural Virginia.
That is a giant statement. We will see more jobs, we'll see more families that raise their families here, we will see more contribution to the local economy in a big way, and that's what this is all about.
While the shovels are in the grounds now, work won't be underway until the end of the year.
Leaders say they are calling the brand name Tin Ridge to honor the Blue Ridge Mountains right here in southwest Virginia. Reporting in Henry County, Taylor Locke, WDBJ 7.
Also, yeah, that's been a good day. We've, the new Shell building is coming online. It is already generating a lot of prospect interest. You can see the artist's rendering. If you've ridden by on Lot 2 across Ambassador, you'll see this building's up. It's really an attractive building. It'll be finished, so probably over the next month or six weeks, so it is getting very close to being completed, but already being marketed. This will give you a little bit of a drone view of it, just in the last couple of days. It's 100,000 square feet, expandable to 400,000, which is really critical as a lot of folks are looking for larger buildings. Gives you an idea, it'll be a lot of glass in it. The color scheme is different than we've used before. I think it's going to be very attractive. So that gives you a little bit of an idea of that and how that looks. Track 2, it's a common crossing, is equally generating a lot of prospect interest. You can see that master plan, Track 2 is 150-acre pad. This is looking at it, view to the north, and you can see all the orange is graded. The grading, we expect to be completed by the end of October. And again, this track's already generating quite a bit of interest. And we have applied, as you see in our report, to re-up our ready sites designation through the Site Selectors Guild. That's looking to the south and to the east and to the west, which is really a great view because you have the mountains in the background. It's going to be a great sight for us. So that's a real quick update of what's been going on in September. It's been a busy month, but we'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions of Mark at this time? Mark, I think on behalf of the Board and between staff and the EDC, staff members, you all helped Henry County put its best foot forward on the day that we had statewide attention to the area, and I really appreciate that, and I know the Board appreciates.
It's our pleasure to look into that.
Everything was first-class, all the way down to making sure that you had adequate facilities on the home spot if necessary, and I just thank you.
As older we get, we realize how important it is.
But again, thank you.
Thank you for giving this opportunity.
We'll take up financial matters at this time under Agenda item number 8, 8A, an additional appropriation referencing the clerical position for the clerk of court. Mr. Wagner.
Circuit Court Clerk Jennifer Ashworth is asking the Board to appropriate miscellaneous street funds and revenues in an amount of $10,000. She plans to use the funds for salary expenses for a part-time clerk of position in her office.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the Board desire to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $10,000 for the Circuit Court clerical position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 8B, an additional appropriation referencing an insurance settlement for Parks and Rec. Dale?
Roger Adams, Director of Parks and Recreation, is requesting the Board to approve an additional appropriation of $25,968 received from insurance settlement. Recently, a tree fell on a shelter at J.C. Park, destroying the structure. The funds will be used to make the repairs to the shelter.
In regard to this additional appropriation, what does the Board desire to do?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation of $25,968 received from the insurance settlement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 8C, an additional appropriation referencing fresh fruit and vegetable program for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
School Board is requesting that divorce advisors approve an additional appropriation of $239,100 to the school's nutrition budget for the fresh fruit and vegetable program in the elementary schools. The funds are provided by the Virginia Department of Education from the United States Department of Agricultural Allocation. There's several members of the school board office here. Did you have any questions?
Great. Board has background material on that. If someone would like to offer a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the additional appropriations of $239,100 to the public school nutrition budget for the fresh fruit and vegetable program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 8D, an additional appropriation referencing the 1% sales tax funds for new construction and renovation for the school board. Mr. Wagner.
The school board is requesting two appropriations, owing $1,859,700 from the 1% of the sales tax fund designated for new construction and renovation of schools. Of this amount, $1,689,700 would be used to install new elevators at Union Mason and G.W. Culver Elementary Schools, while $170,000 would fund architectural engineering services to replace the main electrical switchgear at Phil Del Collinsville and Royal Park Middle Schools.
Again, you've been provided the background material on this. What action would the Board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appropriation of $1,859,700 from the 1% sales tax fund for new construction and renovation of schools as requested by the school board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. 8E, an additional appropriation and award of contract referencing reservoir road reconstruction for the Engineering and Mapping Department. Mr. Wagner.
Tim Pace, Director of Engineering and Mapping, is requesting the Board to approve an additional appropriation of $915,846 received from the Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Fund. The funds are designated for the reconstruction of Reservoir Road located in Ridgeway District and adjacent to Commonwealth Crossing Business Center. Mr. Pace is also asking the Board to award a contract of $1,975,117 to Haynes Brothers Incorporated for the reservoir road reconstruction project. Following a request for bids, Haynes Brothers Incorporated submitted a loan bid and was selected for the project. The additional funding for this project is provided through the Appalachian Regional Commission, Virginia Department of Transportation, B.D.O.R. Insurance Agreement Program, and the local matching funds, all of which have already been funded.
Great. Even though this is a project that the Board wraps its arms around, Mr. Pruitt, I believe this is in your district.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the additional appropriation, sorry, yeah, the additional appropriation of $915,846 and awarding a contract of $1,975,117 to Haynes Brothers Incorporated for the reconstruction of Reservoir Road.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. That takes us to Agenda item number nine, informational items. It will take comments from the Board, starting with Dr. Cobbler. Then, Mr. Pruitt.
I don't have any time.
Mr. Dillon.
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan.
I do.
Okay.
I have a couple. All right, I know that Mr. Wagner, the county administrator, had passed out the legislative agenda, and I wanted to talk a little bit more about that because I had talked to Dale in regard to one of the requests. And the Blue Ridge Airport is a regional hub for our community, so I want us hopefully to wrap our arms around it and provide, it provides an avenue for medical transport, economic development, and tourism. With the runway extension to accommodate larger jets for corporate travel and the proposed expansion of a new terminal, new opportunities on the western side of Henry County are possible. For many years, I've talked about the need for further expansion of water and sewer up 58 West. I know that studies have been done to provide the estimated costs, with the last numbers that Mr. Wagner gave me was $7 million for sewer and $5 million for water. I had the opportunity again to talk with our legislators, Eric Phillips, Ren Williams, and Bill Stanley regarding the need for water and sewer up 58 West, and was told to make sure that all three legislators are included in any requests that Henry County might have. And they said it's preferable to just provide them with a one-page synopsis. I would like to see these requests of water and sewer be included in our legislative agenda, which Mr. Wagner has done, as well as making sure that Henry County is applying for all possible grants and loans with loan forgiveness through the DEQ and the Department of Health. So I don't need to make a motion for that because it is on the legislative agenda. Just want to make sure that all three of our legislators do get a one-page summary of what we're looking for.
Yeah, and if I could, maybe update the most recent numbers. We called our engineer firm that did the initial preliminary engineering reports to update to today's price, and the numbers are a little bit low.
Low.
But the primary cost for the sewer line is $10.8 million.
It's gone up a lot.
And then the water line is $3.8 million. So we'll update those numbers in the one-page synopsis as well.
Thank you. All right, I have.
If we could, do you have another?
I do.
Okay.
All right. I've also talked with a county administrator in regard to this, and I've not given a lot of thought to it until I saw on the news the recent ban by Roanoke City in regard to wolf dogs, and I had our county administrator, county attorney, look into it. I was told that the local governments do not have the authority to regulate what breeds of dogs you may own. Is that right, Mr. Lyle?
That's the latest I had. I've got to call into Roanoke to find out what they're doing. I don't know exactly how they're doing it, but if there's been a change or if they have charter authority, I don't know. But that's historically in Virginia, there's a dangerous dog ordinance, and that's all we've been able to do is based on the behavior of the dog and not regulate breeds. If there's, I was unaware if there's been a recent change or if they have different authority in Roanoke.
Okay. All right, I understand that you cannot ban a specific dog breed, but exceptions do exist for wolf-dog hybrids.
Okay.
And if it addresses public safety. So I understand that wolf hybrids are legal in Virginia, but a number of states have banned them or restricted them with grandfather clauses on these hybrids. So anyway, they have, but they do require local permits, and they have to be registered because of their aggressive, unpredictable, and instinctive behavior. So I'm bringing this topic up for Henry County, just to keep it on the radar at this point. I hadn't thought a lot about it until, it's been several months ago, I was riding through Henry County, and I can't even tell you where I was at, but I saw a dog in the yard, and I looked at it and I thought it was a, not a fox, but a.
Coyote.
Coyote in the yard. And I looked, but then I realized it had a collar on, so I couldn't quite figure out what it was, and I came home and told somebody about it. Could have been what I was thinking, could have been a wolf dog or could have been a coyote that someone had brought home and raised, who knows? But anyway, not to be silly about it, but in the area that we do live in, it's, a lot of it is rural, so there is a lot of wildlife, there's livestock, there's chickens, smaller outdoor cats and dogs, and also, you know, small children that play. So just something to think about, and if Mr. Lyle would try to find out.
I'll follow.
I think we need to be one step ahead as opposed to two steps back.
I'll follow.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to yield my time to our registrar and have her comment on how many we've had to early vote so far, if she will. And I know she will. She just wasn't expecting that.
Yes, she was.
So we have checked in 108 mail ballots. As of last count earlier, we were at 409 voters. That was this morning. I haven't gotten an update this afternoon, but yeah, so that's a lot, considering the first day we had 208 voters, and for the presidential election, the first day, we had 394. So I think that says a lot that a lot of people are trying to come out and early vote.
Thank you all for the preparation of this, and again, we always encourage people to go out and vote. Are you getting what you need as far as the resources for Election Day and staffing the precincts?
Yes, sir, we are. And we've got a new software program where we're able to actually email and communicate electronically with a lot of our workers, which is new to them and to us. Excuse me, so it's had a positive impact, and I think the younger generations will probably appreciate that a little bit more than the old snail mail and phone calls, so.
Well, thank you all for what you're doing. My understanding, there will be two Saturdays as well that are dedicated toward early voting, maybe the last Saturday in October and November 1.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much. Mr. Wagner.
So I have three items, and they all lead back to the legislative agenda.
Okay.
In some fashion. The first item is, we received a request from Dr. Mark Craftery asking the Board of Supervisors to consider supporting. asking the Board of Supervisors to consider supporting the resolution that was presented where Patrick Henry Community College would take over the operation of the new college building and make it the Patrick Henry Workforce Economic Development Building at Baldwin Park. There's been some news coverage on that. So they are asking if we would like to write a letter of support for, you know, legislative items supporting that transition of New College to Patrick Henry Community College. Do you want to discuss them individually, or you want?
I think maybe this would be a good stopping point to discuss that. Are most of you familiar with what's going on there? And?
I, I'm not that familiar with it, no, sir.
Okay. All right.
I wasn't familiar with Mr. Crabtree's request.
So, Dr. Mark Crabtree is on the board for the New College Institute. Him and two other members of the board has taken a, I wouldn't say an aggressive approach, but proactive approach to decide the direction of New College Institute. As you know, over the past two General Assembly budgets, funding for the new college was stricken from the governor's budget on both occasions, and it had to be added back to the new General, by the General Assembly. So there's been some uncertainty about the future of New College. So Mark Crabtree and others are lobbying for a cause to ensure that we have an institution of education here in our community in that building, that it be turned over to the new Patrick Henry, and it become the Workforce and Economic Development Center and be operated by Patrick Henry Community College. If, you know, our endorsement would just be a letter of support if you so choose to do so. It's many steps that has to take place. Of course, the Council for Higher Education has to approve it. The General Assembly would have to approve the funding for the community college system would have to approve the inclusion of it. So there's a lot of steps in this process, because they were asking for your support upfront.
And Dale, also, it would be a revenue-neutral event for the community that the money spent on NCI would go to Patrick Henry, an equal amount.
Yeah, and that's what they're asking for.
Yeah. It wouldn't be like an unfunded gift or transfer.
You all have any thoughts on that? Is there something that community members will support?
Yeah, I support it because I think that the New College Institute needs assistance in a sense like that. But it would be a perfect fit for Patrick Henry Community College to get involved with that, because the college itself, you know.
And Mr. Chairman, I knew I threw this on some of you, and I never heard of it, so I apologize for that. So it may be a better approach on this topic than a couple of the others, that instead of putting all the members on the spot right at this moment, we'll talk about it, and then maybe if you are all ready to take action on it at six o'clock, we can do that. If not, we can do it at a future part of the meeting.
All right.
That'll give everybody more time to think about it.
But you said you had a couple of items.
I do. So that's one of the items related to the legislative agenda. Another item that just recently, I just got today, that they want to answer as quickly as possible. Many of you are familiar with the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor. It's an effort to bring more attention to what will most likely be the fourth-largest economy in Virginia. That area extends from Martinsville up to Roanoke and New River Valley, and there's a whole collective effort that was generated from the private sector to get more attention to this area with more funding going into road infrastructure and airports and all the things that support a growing economy. There is some data out there. We're staying on our growth trajectory as far as jobs and economic development in this region. It will be the fourth-largest economy in the state by 2035, and it's an effort that says we need to get ahead of it, and we need to take action on it. So the organizers of the BRIC, the Blue Ridge Innovation Corridor, is asking us for our support for a grant application to the Go Virginia Region Two and Three. And part of that grant requires every locality to commit ten, up to $10,000 in in-kind funding. So I think it's a very worthy call. You may remember that effort got started right here in Henry County with some of our business folks in our community, and I served with that committee in its early days. And it kind of mirrors some time back, those who've been on the board. We had to effort with Franklin County and Roanoke County to do some synergy along the corridor. And now we have the leadership of the business community taking a run on that. So I would like to ask you for your support on that and make a commitment to that, that I'll give you a chance to think about that as well, if you want to do that. And then, kind of rolled into all this is the legislative agenda. I normally get to this to you in advance for consideration, and I was going to do it on next month's agenda, but when Deborah brought the item about the water and sewer, I decided to put this out there to you now for your, to get in your hands. Everything on this agenda should not be a surprise to you. It's pretty much a lot of what we've had in the past. We've done it in several different ways in the past. One year, we did it on postcard, mailed it to every General Assembly member in the state. Last year, we took a more comprehensive approach where we, it was about a four-page document described every one of these items. So I took all the items. I think it's important to summarize it to one page. And I say that this is just like a checklist of what's important to the county. It's not all-inclusive, and it's not detailed how we would approach. We don't just develop this and leave it at that. And I'll give you an example, like for the water and sewer project that Ms. Buchanan mentioned. We'll expand on that. We'll provide additional detail where it's needed by us to try to get funding for it. Another great example is, you know, funding of Mayo River State Park. It's one little line item on this, but our efforts are much more broader than just that. We had people from the state here to look at the park and hike the trails. And we've been in Richmond a lot before. So we'll pick out the big items and really go after those with our lobbyists and through our legislative representatives. So the, really, kind of the, a couple of things that are kind of new on this is the water and sewer project. If you go down under Public Safety and Justice, the very last item is, we're working really hard. The sheriff has had quite a few conversations with General Assembly members, and is, currently there's a compensation board policy that penalizes local jails for housing federal inmates or out-of-state inmates. And I don't want to get in a lot of detail, but if you're interested, the sheriff's been explaining it all to you. But it basically makes it impractical from a financial perspective to house inmates from other jurisdictions outside of Virginia, or federal inmates. So we want to get that remedy because it's really hindering their ability to make a difference in their operation, recovered income, you know, for the operation of the jail. So we've added that, and we're working at it in many different avenues as well. So I provide that to you as well. At some point, I'd like formal approval of the legislative agenda. If it's anything else you'd like to add, you can provide those to me. And we can either take action later today or next month, whatever your pleasure is. But these are the items we're going to be working on, you know, now unless you tell us not to. We're going to go ahead and get started on, even though we may not have formal approval from you all. I got a couple more items unrelated to this, just to make sure there's no questions on this. All right. So just one more thing. I've got a piece of glass I want to show off to you all. Henry County recently was presented a award from VDOT called Excellence in Act of Transportation Bicycle and Pedestrian for 2025. You say, wow, you know, why can't they use this money to mow grass, right? And the reason I bring this to you, it's attention. It's not about a project. It was granted to us for Phase Six of the Dick and Willie Trail, which is a great project. We received a reward for the management of the project. So county staff, Tim Pace and his crew, Darryl Jones in the finance office, and everything that went in to make that project. And if you've ever seen the paperwork related to a VDOT project, it's massive, it's head ache. And this group of folks did a tremendous job to the point that they recognize for how great a job we gave with the paperwork. And apparently, that's not common, or they wouldn't give an award for it. So kudos to Tim and Darryl and all their crew. And we carried this down to give to Darryl and see Buzz working with VDOT and all the paperwork. One last thing. County Fair starts tomorrow, runs through Saturday, and there will be a ribbon cutting in 4:55 to borrow the main entrance if you want to attend the ribbon cutting. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Thank you. That takes us to agenda item 10. If someone will cite the items allowed by the Code of Virginia Freedom of Information Act to allow us to go into closed meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board convenes in a closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, 2.23711A1, Discussion of Appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, 2.23711A7, for Discussion of Pending Legal Matters, 2.23711A3, for Discussion of the Acquisition-Disposal of Real Estate, and 2.23711A5, for Discussion as Yet Unannounced Industries.
Second.
There's motion and a second. All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Pruitt. Mr. Powell, will you hold the board, please?
Yes, sir. Board members, if you'd be able to acknowledge all the topics that have been lifted from open meeting requirements and according to Section 23711, we've discussed and considered the closing. Will you, how do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Ryan? Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Ms. Buchanan, I believe that you have a district report for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board appoint Charisse Hairston to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, representing the Horse Pasture District, for an unexpired term that ends June 30th, 2027.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Pruitt, I believe that a settlement and some litigation you would like to bring before the board?
Yes, sir. I move that Henry County Board of Supervisors approve the county's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Alvegin, Amnil, Apotex, Hakima, Indivor, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus, and their related corporate entities, and direct the county attorney and outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlements by adopting the attached resolution dated today.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is six zero, Jennifer. And Mr. Wagner, is in regard to the legislative package, even up until the time that, if there's any fine tuning, we can still offer some later on, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And it's often when we get into session, we come back for action, immediate action, what we take back during session in some particular direction. So thanks for that.
One of the reasons I'm bringing it up is you all had this before you. And Ms. Buchanan, you spoke to it earlier this afternoon. And this is not unlike, as mentioned before, some of the things that we've had in the past. Plus, Dr. Cobbler and I served on West Piedmont Planning District Commission. They're also looking for direction as far as legislative packages and as early as possible to forward each locality's wishes and desires as to what they would like to be communicated. That helps them to assemble this together. And again, we're talking about multiple counties in the region, and cities, and town of Rocky Mount as well. Would anyone like to offer a motion that we direct staff to forward this, what's before you, to our legislators?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or clarification needed on this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask one question.
Yes, sir.
Are we including the support of Patrick Henry Community College taking over the NCI? Or are we going to address that second?
I was going to ask you about that, and you obviously have talked with the NCI folks, and are they glad about this also? It seems like, it seems like a very positive thing, but.
So I've only talked with two of the board members that proposed a resolution over three.
Okay.
Talked with Dr. Crabtree and Leeland Brill. And they see it as a direction to have stability in that facility and use it for something that's needed in this area. And Patrick Henry decided on it, saying they would make use of it and use it as practical.
I would include that in my motion to do that.
Sure. It's what you have before you, and I also include support of a resolution in regard to the Baldwin building as described, becoming part of Patrick Henry Community College and the stated purposes. There's been newspaper stories on it as well, for some of the obvious reasons of moving forward and, you know, the state supporting this and the college. And I think you mentioned revenue neutral to the area. And one of the other things I think that consideration is, I guess, some of the separation of philosophies on the foundation supporting the educational side of it. There's been some disagreements there, and they're hoping that maybe this resolves some of those issues as well. So we've got a motion from Mr. Pruitt and a second, and I can't recall who made a second.
I am not.
Dr. Cobbler. Any other questions or clarifications? All in favor would be six zero, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, do you have any items that we need to consider prior to recess?
I do, thank you.
Board members, do you? If not, I will declare a recess at 5:04. We'll start our evening session promptly at 6:00. I'll call the 6:00 PM session of the September 23rd, 2025, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess of the afternoon session. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to address the board, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later in tonight's meeting as agenda item number 13. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. The first thing that we have tonight, agenda item number 11, is presentation of the Henry County Headliner Award. Mr. Wagner, will you give us a little bit of background, and then I'm going to call on Supervisor Dillard to give us some additional information.
Sure. In 2022, the Board of Supervisors established the Henry County Headliner Award to recognize individuals whose accomplishments extend beyond Henry County and bring positive recognition to our community. This award honors residents who have made significant contributions in their respective fields and whose achievements serve as a source of pride for Henry County. And as you mentioned, Mr. Dillon, does he have further information about her?
Yes, sir. And I appreciate the opportunity to introduce this young lady. And I've had an opportunity to meet her over the last few years, and most of it was somewhere dealing with basketball or policing. And I found her to be the same person in every situation, just a great individual. And just to give you a little bit of history about her, she played, she was a four-year starter and a point guard and a floor leader for Faram College. And she helped guide Faram to the 2006-2007 USA South Championship, and she broke their school record for assist in a game, and she dished out 16 assists in that championship game. And she earned Rookie of the Week honors twice, made the All-American Team, and was named All-Conference. And this year, all those accomplishments were honored when she was inducted into the Faram College Hall of Fame, and that was just recently. And not only has she, you know, done well on the basketball court, but she's shown hard work, leadership, and determination. And you can do whatever you want to do, not just for your team, but also for your community. And now she continues to make an impact every day right here with our young folk, with the Henry County Sheriff's Department. And, you know, with that being said, I also want to make sure I mention that she was just recently named the head girls' basketball coach at Carlisle. And so we want to call up Ms. Ashley Norton to come on down so she can receive this community headliner award. And in doing so, we also would like to ask you to come up and sign these for each of our board members. I am not joking. That is you. That is your own card. We actually, now, I do have to say this, and we're going to have to get on Brandon. She played at Magnavista. He selected blue and orange.
Now, how are you going to show up on this?
Now, he said these were the only two colors that would work on that card. That's what he said. So I don't know if that's a conspiracy or not. what he said. So, I don't know if that's a conspiracy or not, but we would like for you to sign each of the board member's card. And afterwards, we'd love you to have a few words. And congratulations.
Absolutely.
Oh, my gosh.
Keep the emotions.
You got to sign this one right here.
I'll do it with the basketball.
I want to say a few comments about Ashley.
Uh-oh. Known you for a long time.
Ash, uh, Ashley actually grew up in the same community that I live in. And I'm very familiar with this young lady. Um, I knew her mom, her siblings, aunts, uncles, maternal grandparents. And she was dynamite, uh, in high school in sports. I tell you, she dominated sports. She was good at it, always knew she would be. Uh, and she's done very well for herself.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Ashley, we also have a ball pack.
I'll, I'll give those out for sure.
Well, if it were limited to this, we'd have them on eBay tonight.
I know a guy. I know a guy that sells a lot of stuff on TikTok and stuff.
And if you wouldn't mind, we're going to circle behind Dr. Kobl over here and the entire board and have a picture with you.
Absolutely.
I'll go over here and sign up. Oh, you're fine. You can box me.
You go this way.
Try to get on the chair.
He's good.
Three, two, one.
It's almost a mugshot.
One more, one more. Perfect. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, if you would go to the podium.
Congratulations. I love that one. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you guys for coming. I wasn't prepared for this at all. Actually, I had to call at 4:00 today to be here. So, I appreciate you guys coming and sharing stuff to come and support me. And thank you guys so much for the recognition. I never thought I would get that kind of recognition, but here I am. Thank you, guys.
Go Panthers.
Go Panthers, that's right.
Okay, our next agenda item, as, uh, general highway matters, we have with us David Kaiser from VDOT. David, welcome.
Good evening. I, uh, just have a few titles to give you to update on tonight. The two type projects that we have going on on, on 683 The Great Road and Meadowwood Trail have finished. Um, they'll be paved in the Great Road location this week. Uh, the down flashing lights at 687, um, a few weeks ago, uh, double wide, uh, hooked them and caught them down. Uh, all, all district, horse and air will be meeting with the contractors out there next week. So, hopefully, they'll be reinstalling that, um, very quickly after that meeting. Only other thing is we are ramping up the last round of mowing. Um, the Horse Pasture Area Headquarters has already woven on 220 business. And, and they, the rest of the crew and the other area headquarters will fully start mowing the primaries on October the 6th to get everything, uh, cleaned up and done, uh, before the race weekend. And after we do that, then we'll go to finishing up anything, um, for the rest of the year on the second day. And that's the only, uh, I think I asked for.
So, just a, just a question, secondaries, how much timeframe are we looking at on the secondary ridge?
Some areas, um, have just recently mowed a lot of the roads, so they may not have to get those again. Others, it's been a while, so they're tall. So, it's, it's kinda, it's hard to say because it's kinda all over the, the place. But I know it should take more than, than a, a few weeks at, at least, depending on whether to do the primaries. Because this is the last mowing, so we'll be mowing everything within the right-of-way, all the large areas that will let.
Well, I, I, you know, I do know Clearview Drive, the grass is over six foot tall in the spots.
Mm-hmm. Yes. And if those, um, safety issues at any intersections, please try to have citizens call us and call the 100, 800 number or let us know because we will address those, uh, as soon as we know about them. Otherwise, you know, they'll, they'll be, once they get the primaries done, they'll move straight to, to getting the secondaries.
The, the clover leaf at, at Bassett Forks, and I'm, I'm going to take liberty just to talk about this two or three minutes. And we've just decided that we're just going to keep bringing this stuff up. Uh, it's nothing new, but I've been on the board for a year and a half now. And again, weekly, someone, since I've been a board member, has said something to me about the mowing and the trash. And I attended almost every board meeting prior to my becoming a supervisor, and it was constant and ongoing, uh, communication and issues with it. We invited Delegate Phillips' last board meeting to, uh, address this because we are being told that, that we just have to have more money in the budget, from the state budget, for our, our region and our areas because of more money going to the roads and the trash in Northern Virginia and other places. And we're not sure that that's a satisfactory answer. And then we also invited Senator Stanley, uh, because he did put in, he told us when we saw him this past week, an additional, a bill for an additional $25 million for our area, that it did not pass. Uh, but he said he would continue to work on it, and he will plan, he is planning to come back to our district to specifically talk about these issues. And we had the Greater Bassett Area Council who has, they, they got their signs, adopt, uh, highway and, and all that, which beautiful signs up in Bassett. And they're, they're, they're doing a great job. And we are asking more community organizations to get involved. So, I'm just going to mention it again, and the, and I'll just take a couple more minutes, if that's okay, Mr. Adams. We had a joint planning commission with the, the Board of Zoning yesterday, where we've been working on the plan. And a few, a few of us just admittedly said that we were a little bit jealous of Ridgeway and the, the way that it looks coming into Henry County from that, from that, from that area in 220. And then coming from Roanoke South into Henry County is my district. And it, something's got to be done. It's embarrassing. And I want to start with the clover leaf. And the last thing that I'll say about it with the trash and the mowing, I just came from there today. And my word, it's, it's a, it's an aggressive word or serious word. It is an outrage, what it looks like. So, something's going to have to be done with the, the budget and the VDOT and Henry County and our community groups and everything. And I do have a question. I mentioned this to someone earlier today. Is there, it's, it's not going to be free, I understand, but the Greater Bassett Area Council had a conversation about having a piece of machinery, uh, I don't know what the answer is. Is there a piece of machinery that can be bought or talked about budgeting for when things are mowed, that it also sucks up the grass and the trash at the same time? When we mow our yards, it, it just, you know, people have, they have those collect, the grass collectors on their lawn mowers. Is there something, not a sweeper, that just blows it back and not, uh, and this, another, uh, individual said that they've seen people just blowing it back off the road. It, it's not being picked up. But is there machinery or is there apparatus, apparatus, is there something that could collect the trash as it's being mowed, when it's mowed? And I'll, thank you, Mr. Adams, and I'll stop there.
I was writing that down just so I can keep some notes. And, you know, I, I, as with that last part, I don't know. I can definitely ask around. I know I've never seen any attempt to have anything like that used, but it doesn't mean there's nothing out there. So, it's, it's worth checking in to see if, if anything does exist.
Thank you.
Okay, others?
Uh, yeah, I, I just, uh, and I agree with exactly what you said, uh, Ms. Kobl. Uh, I talked to Lisa at VDOT and told her that, uh, whenever the county is going to mow in their districts, it's let us know several days before so we can make arrangements with the county to get the trash picked up first before they go through and mow it and scatter that trash all over the place. See, they've not been doing it. They haven't been notifying us that they're going to mow the grass. And when they mow the grass, they hit that trash and like Ms. Kobl says, it goes everywhere. Uh, and I'm, I'm in my mind thinking, how are you going to separate the grass and the trash that goes up into the cove and it comes to catch it, you know? There may be a way to do it. But if we could get notified, uh, and I told her about Clearview Drive especially, is call me, you know, a few days before, uh, you're going to mow Clearview Drive because it's got trash all down in those weeds, all down in the weeds, so we can get that picked out of it. So, it won't be scattered all over the place. So, I think, I think coordination would help a lot if we could coordinate with VDOT the time that's going to be mowing the grass instead of them just mowing it at their own time.
Okay.
So, anyone else have any items for Mr. Kaiser? David, thank you.
Thank you all.
That takes us to agenda item 13, matters presented by the public. We had, uh, two people that signed up tonight, and I have met one, uh, Mr. Miller here.
Not seeing.
Not seeing or being able to identify. Uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, one person that signed up under matters presented by the public was Ms. Melody, Melanie Hampton. And I have a brief policy statement to read prior to coming. And this applies to anyone else, uh, as well speaking under matters presented by the public. This is a time for public comment. We welcome your participation in tonight's meeting. We're here to listen to you. Uh, if you care to address the board, come to the podium, state your name, your subject matter, and the district in which you live. By coming to the podium, you have agreed that you'll exhibit respect for the board and its members and the staff. You will receive the same consideration from the board and staff. Please try to keep your presentation to no more than five minutes. Uh, Ms. Hampton?
Good evening. I am Melanie Hampton. I am a lifelong resident of the Heights Community in the Collinsville District. And I have been on this journey for about a year and a half. I started in February of '24. I sat down and met with Wayne Davis in his office for about two hours one evening. I had gathered information, GIS, property cards, uh, tenant information or homeowner information, contact information, pictures of the current situation of the properties. And many of them were a disaster, to say the least. Um, in March of '24, Wayne Davis referred me over to Timmy Robertson, who is the deputy, I'm sure you know, over the trash mowing and such ordinances with the county. Um, Officer Robertson has told me on multiple occasions that he is extremely covered up, that he has more on his plate than he can handle. And I'm sure he does. And looking at the county, I don't doubt him at all. Um, he did tell me with a few of the properties that he prefers a friendly approach. And I totally get that on first, second, and maybe even third attempt to get something done. Um, the handful of properties that I've brought to their attention seem to be the same properties year after year after year. We have to go out to these same properties every single time. Um, I feel like at some point, we're wasting taxpayers' dollars. We're wasting deputies' time that they could be spent doing something that was a little more productive. I feel like at some point, we should start enforcing some fines and the jail time that is in the county's by laws or whatever you call those. Um, I understand, I've been told by many different people, Joe, Timmy, even Wayne, that when we try to enforce these laws or when we try to enforce these fines, that when they get to the judge, the judge turns them away. I can't hold the judge accountable and I can't hold the judge's feet to the fire if it never gets to him, if he never sees it. And in the event that we get a judge that is willing to stand behind it, there's no paper trail. We're starting from scratch. Once we get one of those judges in place to try to get that done, there's no paper trail. That judge has got to start from scratch. So, um, in summer of '24, Robertson referred me to Joe Bryant. And Joe has gotten some things done. He got some yards mowed. He got a camper that we had meth addicts living in removed from our neighborhood. We did get those things done. Um, I have some pictures to share of just some of the properties and some of what we're dealing with. And I just want all of you to try to imagine living next door to these properties. Um, the pictures don't even, they don't even bring justice to what it really looks like in person. You're all, I encourage all of you to ride out and see these properties. The first property is 280 Sunrise Avenue. There was a fire, a large house fire in this property in November of '22. Um, Tyler Public Safety told me that the living room floor burned completely through in this property. And there's been no lights, no running water, no taxes have been paid on this house since 2015, even prior to the fire. Um, the amount without the collection agency's fees that is owed to the county right now is $4,911. The people are still staying in the home with no running water, no electricity. I'm curious as to where we're using the bathroom and where we're showering. They have since added a camper to the driveway. We're not zoned for living in campers. I've been told we have to prove that they're living in the camper. There's a generator right beside of the camper. And if any line went out after dark, they would find them living in said camper. That is this property here. And I actually have two of this property. And one is from a side view. This is from the tray on in front of the house. Um, you can see it's not a very pleasant picture. And then I have the side view that's actually from a neighbor who called the police a week ago because the gentleman came out of the camper unclothed in front of her children and walked to the house. So, that's the kind of people we have. I understand as of today that both of these people are in jail. For one reason or another, they tend to stay in and out of jail. So, then my next property is, sorry, um, 269 Lafayette. Um, the homeowner that has the home and doesn't live in it, he, I think, got married and moved out of the home. The home's been empty for at least 10 years. Every year, this house grows up to this extent. And then the county has to go, "Can you clean your house up?" Every single year, every year. You can barely tell there's a house there. Barely tell there's a house there. And that's every single year, every year. I have 247 Lafayette. There is a whole entire yard of untagged vehicles. And I was told by Officer Robertson that he had a soft spot for one of the people that lived in this home because he'd had a rough life and kind of felt bad for him. That home is also the mother of one of our state troopers. So, I feel like there's a, we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings or we don't want to overstep and make anybody mad. But I'm kind of gone at this point. We've got a whole, it looks like a junkyard. Chris Beeks has meek salvage at the bottom of the hill that looks better than this property, for all means. And he was made to put up a privacy fence to hide his mess. Um, I have 119 Knickle Drive has been, I think it's been in a state of, and it's been vacant for quite some time as well. And it's not quite as bad as the others, but it does stay grown up and the yard is never mowed. Just kind of falls over and the next year comes in right behind it. I have 114 Dudley Drive, which is two houses below me. Um, it has been recently foreclosed. No one's living in the home. Um, I think Joe did get the county to mow that recently. But you have, they have to be reminded every time to do something with this. And, um, somebody recently parked a boat trailer in that lot. So, I guess we're going to just pile junk up there now. So, it's like there, anywhere there's a vacant spot in our neighborhood, people just kind of tend to start piling things in. Um, at one time, the house that has all the cars, Joe had, had sent someone over and asked them that they would have to get rid of the untagged vehicles. They moved them three houses up to a house that has a reverse mortgage on it that's empty. And they sat there for months. And I had to beg, borrow, and plead to get anyone to say someone, say something to them. But I didn't want to say anything because of who the son is and not make anyone mad. They did finally get those cars. of who the sign is, and not make anyone mad. They did finally get those cars out, but they moved them back to their house instead of getting rid of them. We're just moving them from place to place. A year and a half into this, I feel like I have been the game piece for past the book. Every time I ask someone, I don't get very far. And I also feel like some of the properties are landlord properties. I think that if we cannot enforce having a landlord be held accountable for their property, then maybe we need to make some changes or some amendments that make a landlord have to be accountable. We have one property in particular that I called them myself when I started this. There is right now, as I'm speaking, a trailer full of trash and the ground beside of it full of household trash bags. And when I called the landlord and mentioned this to him, there's great big letters beside of the door that says, leave books here. The posts have been knocked out from under the front porch, and they came in and just put six by sixes under them. I was told by the landlord, I don't care what they do as long as they pay their rent. Don't feel like any of y'all want to live beside of that. Can we enforce stricter land law rules? Can we do something that makes these landlords, a lot of these landlords don't even live here. I work in landlord's insurance, and I deal with rental properties on day in and day out. And most of your landlords don't even live in this area. They couldn't care less what our area looks like. I feel like that we should make some amendments, enforce and hold people's feet to the fire. I think it's time to start throwing fines and start making people accountable. We have 14 homes that are being built in our neighborhoods by the county, and these people, they're gonna look at those homes right through our neighborhood, and they see all the mess, and they're gonna think one of two things. They're gonna think, I don't wanna live over here. Or they're gonna think, they won't mind if I have trash in my yard, or if I have cars stacked up one on top of the other. We're not setting the bar very high for the new houses that are coming in as well.
All right.
Anybody have any input on what we can do to move forward?
Well, as I stated, we're here to listen, and then there may be some discussion. And I do know that very aggressively, the Sheriff's Department has been making some notes in the back of the room as well.
Okay. This, I just wanna share one more picture, and I'll wrap up. This was the sign going into our neighborhood as of a few weeks ago. My husband and I took our own time one evening, and we cleaned that sign up and rebricked it, and I welcome all of you to ride by and take a digger at that sign now. We were going to our park, people was coming back together. We were talking to neighbors, trying to get people involved to come to these meetings. And we just need some help with influencing the things, or enforcing the things that we cannot do ourselves.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hampton.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, the other person that signed up tonight was Mr. Miller, and I, again, do not see him. So at this time, is there anyone else wishing to address the board on the Matters Presented by the Public? Anyone wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing and hearing no indication as such. Mr. Dillon, you indicated to me that you wanted to bring up an item tonight?
Yes, sir. Wanted to, you know, bring up an item related to the district impact funds, and, you know, would like to make a motion that, you know, with the Iriswood District Impact Funds, you know, donate $500 to the Worship on the Lawn, you know, which has a focus, you know, on the breast cancer awareness. So I would like to make that motion that we use Iriswood District Impact Funds to donate, file, contribute $500 to the Worship on the Lawn event, which takes place on October 4th.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions, or clarification needed? And I will ask this, not knowing this myself, you do have the proper funds in the Iriswood account?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
And, and again, you do have, they're gonna give us all the written?
Yes, sir.
Information, everything like that?
Yes, sir.
And one, one thing that, is this restricted that anyone, or is it open to anyone in the public?
Yeah, it's, it's open to the public, and, you know, it's an event that's taken place over the past three years. Last year, the focus was suicide prevention, and this year, the focus is breast cancer awareness. So it's using a genre of music to bring folk together to focus on a particular social issue, and, you know, that that's the intent of the program. So, you know, it's a great event, bring people together, and, you know, and I, you know, so should be a really good crowd of folk out there.
And are these funds, like, for operating for, like, the stage and stuff of that nature?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then that, and I had the, one of the organizers to share with me in its, in a letter, and I've shared that letter, and it mentioned specifically what those funds will be used for. And I've explained that there would have to be, you know, a detailed invoices, receipts, or whatever, to receive that money. It's not just, you know, someone receiving a check, but you actually have to show what the funds will be used for. And I, and I, I wanna say, and I know some of the conversation, and hopefully I can put this out there, but, you know, it's in reference to, you know, being a gospel event. And, you know, during my research, I really don't know who the Red Walker Band is, but I looked it up, and, you know, it mentions that they're like a southern rock and Christian band, and we have them at the fair. So it's a similar type of thing, it's a genre of music. And this music is bringing folk together, very similar to the Red Walker Band being at the fair. You know, they also do Christian music, it's a Christian band, and, you know, the county helps to, you know, fund the fair. So, and just to, you know, kinda ease that conversation. But, so I think, you know, that's the focus, it's not a church, it's not a church event, but it's a genre of music that will be used to bring folk together. And in a time like this, we need to bring folk together. And if it takes gospel music, rock music, athletic event, whatever it is, if folk can come together and we can fix the division that we have in our world, you know, I'm all for it. And I hope that, you know, everybody else, you know, is out there trying to do some of these events, because this, we just went a difficult time. And we need to, you know, bring folk together. And hopefully, this event is one of those types of events, and, you know, where everybody can come out, feel comfortable, participate in the event, and then also, like I say, breast cancer awareness will be a focus at the event.
Is that where the proceeds will be going, is to breast cancer awareness?
There's no fee to, there's no fee for folk to attend the event.
Gotcha.
So everything that is covered as far as getting the stage and the microphones and things of that nature, is all based off of the funds that are raised to host the event, but there's no fee to go to the event. And if it was a fee to go to the event, of course, I probably wouldn't be making this motion, because if you charging for an event, of course, you charging to cover for the cost of the event.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or clarification? All in favor? It is 6-0, Jennifer. Mr. Wagner, do you have any other items of business that we can, need to consider prior to adjournment?
I do.
Board members?
Yeah, just, now that I got a little time to speak to Ms. Hampton's, where she come up and spoke, I, I agree with her 100%. You know, the Villa Heights area over there is notorious for drugs, alcohol, just you name it, they've got it over there. And the county, like I told y'all here before in the board meeting, that we're investing in 14 homes being built in the Villa Heights area. I have tried, honest to goodness, I've tried really hard to try to get this place cleaned up. Over there, it's like a never-ending battle trying to clean this place up. But we, we need to come up with some kind of plan, whether it would be me to get with you, to get with the community organization meeting, with your community. We can all sit down and come up with a game plan on how we as community, community move forward. You know, I'm all for that also. But it is a mess, and what I'm scared of is gonna happen is this, the houses that we're building over there, we're gonna draw the wrong crowd in unless we get the place cleaned up. And she makes a perfect point, she lives there, she's been living there most of her life.
Almost.
Which, almost. Would we want to live there? Would we want to be beside it? Now, now, going back, I always liked that beside my house, the house that was beside before. I actually had to go and clean it myself, but that's beside a point long ago. But I'm, any way that I can work with, with you as far as doing a community meeting or whatever, you call me at work, we'll set the date and time up, place up, you get the people up, and we'll come up with a game plan on trying to get it done. It's, it's not that the county is not working to try to get it done, it's just so many different moving parts in this story. Trying to get them all worked out is, is difficult. But I understand exactly where you come from, and, and trust me, I'm not trying to put it off to the side. You know, I mean, you don't have to take my word for it. By no means I'm not trying to tell you to take my word for it, but you can just ask some of the deputies that I call all the time, at least, at least once, twice a week, with issues on Lafayette Avenue, trying to get things taken care of. It's just, it's never-ending battle. It's a battle I think we can win if we get together and try to put some enforcement on it. And she is right when she's talking about enforcement. If we start getting a few of these people charged with the negligence, and get their face on public radio, I mean, public TV and so forth, in the newspapers, stuff like that, it may start changing the trend that people want to do the same thing over there, you know? And, you know, so, I'm, I'm all for community working together with, with their public officials. I'm, I'm not scared to sit down and talk to anybody. You just call me, let me know I'm serious, I'll be glad to sit down with you and talk. It's something I can't do by myself, I'm telling you right now. I mean, I'd love to say that I could do it by myself, I'm just telling you, I can't do it by myself. I've gotta have help. And, and these, these board supervisors right here has helped me quite a bit in the past several years, especially with the Villa Heights project. You know, it wasn't just me that got those apartments taken down, it's this board right here that helped me get these apartments taken down. So I, I can't do anything by myself. I can't. You know, it takes this board to work together to get things done. Just as Mr. Dillon made this motion just a little while ago about, you know, the Gotham meeting that he wants to get support for. He can't do it by himself. He relies on us, it's like I gotta rely on all y'all to do it. So, you know, I, I just let you know that I am aware of it. I drive, I drive through Villa Heights probably four times a week, that same little pass down Lafayette Avenue to Dexter to Stolt Road, looking at, you know, has anything been improved, anything been improved, anything been improved, you know? And things move like a snail pace. So, and trust me, I will never stop working on it regardless of how, how long I'm gonna be in office, you know? I'll never stop working on it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I was familiar with Mrs. Russell when she worked with the Villa Heights community. Do you have a current neighborhood watch program?
We do not. The church sold, and we do not have access to the church. That was where we met. Alice Russell, my mom's next door neighbor, she was my neighbor growing up. And yes, they used the church for that, and when the church sold, we no longer have a place that's convenient for everyone to get there. We also have probably at least 50% of this neighborhood that is elderly and nearly homebound, if not homebound. So...
Yeah. And I think it's possible that we could possibly use the Library of Pastoral to beat in, you know? Yeah, they're real good about that. It's something that I'll be glad to try to work with you.
Okay. Any other items, board members, prior to a motion to adjourn? I will accept one then.
So move?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor? It is 6-0, all right, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening.